Good evening. We'll call to order the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on Thursday, June 20th, 2024. Mari Sella, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner De Rosa?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Pro?
Here.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
We have a call.
Great, thank you very much. If everyone would please stand, Commissioner De Rosa is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your hand over your heart and join me as we pledge our allegiance to our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate our town attorney being here with us this evening. You're welcome anytime. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. Glad to be here.
Okay, the first order of business is call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And Mari Sella, I don't see anyone online. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission this evening? Not seeing anyone online or here to address us. We will close that item, call to the public. Agenda item number five, discussion approval or disapproval of minutes from two meetings, April 18th and May 16th, 2024. Mari Sella, should we do these separately or together? Does it matter?
I don't think it matters. You can go ahead and do them separately.
Okay, we'll do them separately. Okay, commission members, is there any comments, concerns, questions on the minutes from our April 18th meeting?
I do have one suggestion I'd like to make. On the minutes from May 16th?
Oh, we're on April 18th.
You're gonna do April? You said you were doing both together.
Yeah, we're gonna do separate.
Oh, you're gonna do them separate. I'm sorry, I'll wait.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that it's a big deal, but there was a spelling error on page four of the minutes of 518. The word "plac" spelt incorrectly. Again, no big deal, but just thought I'd...
Are those the May minutes or the April minutes?
I'm sorry?
Is that the May or the April minutes?
It is the May 18th. I'm sorry, it must be April 18th, yes.
April 18th.
Okay. That was page four?
Yes.
With that, are there any other corrections, suggestions on the April 18th minutes? To all entertain a motion.
A move, we approve the minutes of April 18th.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lehman and a second by Commissioner Pro for approval of the April 18th minutes with the correction made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on to the May 16th minutes. Mr. Lehman?
Yes, I had one suggestion. Under the attendees, because Kathy's movement to the town council, there ought to be a note, maybe in parentheses there, under the present, that she, Vice Chair Adam, had been moved on to the town council and had resigned from the planning and zoning. Is that the right place? How many minutes are we doing?
She was still present, so that's why...
She was present, and she announced, it would be confusing to someone in the future reading these, say, a year or two from now, trying to understand, you know, where her relationship was. It'd be nice to say that up there, that she has, you know, had been appointed to the town council and that she had to have resigned from planning and zoning. That's just a note that could be added.
Okay.
Maybe that's something the town council could answer.
Because she does talk a couple of places in the minutes. I don't know if it'd be confusing to someone reading these minutes later on.
Mr. Chair, if she participated, then reflect her participation. I don't know if she resigned at some point during the meeting.
And I guess that's the question. By being appointed to town council at the council's previous meeting, does that automatically cause her resignation from Planning and Zoning Commission? If that does, then her name should probably be removed from being the vice chair.
In reality, it does. But if she participated, I mean, I wouldn't...
She participated, but...
It doesn't hurt anything to make the note that she, you know, the suggestion from the commission.
It'd be an honor to her to make that mention in the minutes.
It's perfectly fine.
And she participated, but as a member of the audience, not as a member of the commission?
Then that's correct.
Okay, good correction, good catch. With that, commission members, entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th, is it?
I'll second.
87.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner De Rosa with a second by Commissioner Lehman with the correction noted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? That's four zero, Mari Sella. Item six, new business, presentation approval or disapproval of a signage package for the Starbucks located at 3561 North Hunt Highway. This is CBP-24-039. Mari Sella, I'd like you to have a staff report for us.
Just a brief go over of what was within the staff report. So this is a design review for a Starbucks signed package. They did have their design review back in '23 that got approved by the town council, not by Planning and Zoning Commission. The signed package was not part of it at that time, but they would, decided to bring it back later. This signed package falls under not only the Town Code of Section 150.099, but also the Anthem Marketplace at Merrill Ranch Comprehensive Sign Plan. The applicants did secure a signed approval from the overseeing company for the Anthem Marketplace, Evergreen, and their letter was included in the packet. So Starbucks proposed four new wall signs for the building itself. Three of them are circular, and the fourth is a full text sign that says Starbucks on it. They each don't go over what's required in terms of the wall sign requirements, or that one square foot for each linear foot. And they also didn't take up more than 80% of the width of those buildings. Put in perspective, the elevations were 66 foot on one side, and then the shorter sides were 37 feet. And whatever that is, that is the maximum square area that those signs can be. And all of those signs were under. The circular signs were under, as well as the dimensions for the rectangular one. So that's a brief look at what it looked like. Building and the sign on it. What it looked for Starbucks in the side. Couple others we had to review in the sign plan were drive-through signs, as well as ones that would go in parking spaces, and what was on the monument, and the menu boards. So there were two signs that were for menu boards that were in the drive-through. One in... Okay, yes. So there were drive-through signs there, each three foot, and they're more like directional signs. They were about three feet high, one foot wide, a little over, but all of them met that requirement. And those requirements are listed within Anthem Marketplace for directional signs. They can't be higher than three feet. I believe they can exceed 15 square feet, which is, these were well within those directional sign requirements. And that was per sign. As well as what's in the drive-through is the menu boards. Now, they had a pre-menu board, a menu board, and then they had the ordering, which the ordering one doesn't quite count as a sign or menu sign. But all were within what was required. They were all less than eight feet high, and they did not exceed that 64 square feet, and that was per sign. That wasn't a cumulative, it was per sign. The order screen itself is five feet tall and about three feet wide, so that was also not really an issue. The mobile pickup signs are placed in the parking spots closest to the building, so those could be accessible for those just coming in and picking up and not using the drive-through. And then, of course, two panels will be placed on the plaza signs near the entrances from Hunt Highway. Those fit within the parameters set by Evergreen for those mon... Just to kind of give a visual of what those all look like, you have your menu boards. So the main one is right here, that's the biggest one. And then your pre-menu board, which is further or before the main one. You have your parking spot pickup sign, which is down on the lower left, and then your directional drive-through sign. And then for the monument, you have this, the drive-through with the Starbucks insignia. All that being said, staff found that this all complied with what was put in our code in terms of the Town Development Code, as well as what was required within the Anthem Marketplace at Merrill Ranch Comprehensive Sign Plan, doubled by what Evergreen approved in their letter. This represents the commercial plaza character, as well as the building and business itself. Represents their brand, and it's on par with what's surrounding it. So staff believes that this complies, and should the Planning and Zoning Commission move, they can move to approve, approve with conditions. We've listed four within the staff report, and those are more just basic conditions. We did ask that we get the actual area of the circle. They gave us for it being within a rectangular area, so that would have been six by six or five by five. We wanted to know what the circular actual Starbucks sign was, which, if it's less than the square one, then we're okay, but we just wanted to know for future information. But that's a condition we have. Are there any questions?
Commission members, any questions of staff?
No questions.
I guess I have a question or two or a comment. I went over there, and it did look like any of these signs would be such that there was any light to be placed on the residence. There's a wall on a ravine between the houses and the business, so that should be fine. I did, do we have a approval on the lighting that's actually placed around there? They have two different kinds of lights that I noticed. They have these pendant lights that are kind of angled and kind of shooting into the business, but then they have these circular ones that are kind of along the drive-through that I don't know what they're, if they're shooting down or if they will have some outside, because those are high enough that they could go over the wall and possibly impact on the residents around there. Has that been approved before, or the lights themselves?
The building permit for the Starbucks has already been approved, as, that's when that would have been reviewed.
And that's approval of the lighting that were proposed to be put in?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And that was our full department, that was planning, building, and fire.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
I think we're ready for a motion then.
I'll make the motion that we approve the design review application for CBR-039 with the condition as Mari Sella noted.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pro and a second by Commissioner Lehman for approval with conditions. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes. Thank you, Mari Sella.
Thank you.
Item seven, Director's Report update on short-term projects from the transportation plan?
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening. It's good to see everyone. In terms of the Director's Report for the first item, I understand that this project has been something you've been asking for for some time. It's my understanding that this presentation is continuing to be worked on. I understand that this is likely a presentation that'll be presented to the council and may be presented in a joint session between the council and Planning and Zoning Commission. I would ask that you give me a little bit of time, as I'm new, so I can get this, you know, help move this along, so that this presentation can be made to you. And so that, so I would really just ask for a little bit of patience, so that we can wrap this up, so that that presentation that you've been requesting is presented.
Do you have a timeline?
I do not. I, this work is going to require other departments to be developing the report as well, so I can't speak to how long it'll take them to complete their work.
And I think a lot of this relates to the, basically, the capital improvements program that the town has, you know, and I'm not sure what the town's incremental timeframe is, but, you know, something in the next 10 years or so would be very relevant, I think, to what's coming down and hitting us, and then looking into the future as well and the timeline. So I don't think we're looking for anything any more extravagant than the capital improvements program and how that's, how we're phasing that in.
Right, absolutely. I'll make sure to pass those comments along to the team that's putting together the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, this is a question I asked at my very first meeting. It is part of the 2020 plan. It's now been two months. I know you're new, AJ, and I, you know, know you need some time. It's four years these projects are on the books. Somebody should have answers relatively quick. It should not be something that should take a whole lot of time getting other departments to answer those questions.
Understood.
We appreciate having as much information. Otherwise, this commission is difficult to make some good decisions as plans come forward.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Keep us abreast on that, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I agree that it might be better to have a, some kind of a work session, because I'm sure council members are just as interested in this as we are.
Yes, absolutely.
Item B, update on the increase to the neighborhood meeting notification radius. And I think this was just a concern that we raised, that it seems like the notification radius for McDonald's is virtually the same as for a Florence 287, you know, so we're wondering if there should be a difference.
So, and it seems like this item is, really needs a conversation, right? What I would say is, my understanding is this question did come up, is it related to the conditional use permit down on South Main, on that shell of a drive-through building? The direction that staff has been working under is more comprehensive for those neighborhood meetings than is outlined in current Town Code for neighborhood meetings. That notification requirement for, under the Code for Neighborhood Meetings is only adjacent properties. So the direction that's been given to staff really elevates the notification of neighborhood meetings to be consistent with what's outlined for public hearing notice for the 300-foot radius. In addition to that, instead of picking one notification option, the 300-foot radius is included, but also posting a sign on the property, as well as publishing in the newspaper. So the standard operating procedure in the department right now is more than what is outlined in current Town Code for those neighborhood meetings. What has also happened, and how it works, is that sort of additional direction has really been sort of a service to the applicant. It's more notice than is outlined in the Town Code, and then it lines up with those public hearing requirements, so it creates some efficiencies. And sometime Mari's able to coordinate working with that applicant to make sure that all of then the meetings line up, the neighborhood meeting, the public hearing, and so on. Some cases, that doesn't work on certain projects, but those efforts are undertaken so that folks, so there, again, is that efficiency. Anything moving above and beyond that 300-foot notice kind of pushes us well past the requirements for that 300-foot per state statute, but something to consider. We were thinking in brain, I'm sorry...
And I don't think we've ever been concerned that we aren't meeting the legal requirements. We're just wondering if maybe with the magnitude of some of these projects, if maybe we should expand the bubble a little bit, just to...
So we were thinking about that and trying to line up that further outreach with reasonability. And so we had a, right now, those notices are not advertised on our website. We thought that that might be something that we could include on the town website as an event, that there's a neighborhood meeting in the community about this specific consideration. Also, using town social media might be another way to get a broad reach of, you know, so many folks are relying on social media for their information, working with folks here in Town Hall to, you know, kind of broaden that sort of outreach. And again, if there are other recommendations that the commission has, we would really like to hear what those are and, you know, and move forward, making sure that those are part of the standard operating procedures, making sure that we're reaching as many folks as we can when these meetings are coming up.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I?
Director, just off the top of my head, I think the 300-foot is too small, particularly in the rural area of town.
Yeah.
Where there's, you know, scattering of buildings and stuff. I think something more like a quarter mile, 1,200-some feet might be a little better. That would be a suggestion. And also, if I understand right, that's only the notice for a public meeting, but what's the adjacent?
So the current requirement for the neighborhood meeting per Town Code is a written or notice mailed to the adjacent properties?
Could we maybe change both parts of the town ordinances to read a quarter mile for mailing and for other notices? Maybe that would be a suggestion.
Okay.
And that way, we really don't have to play favors between people in a neighborhood in town versus a rural area.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, yes, so maybe the town attorney can tell us what the best practices are. We are a rural community. Every project will not need to be noticed broadly. There are some projects that the 300-foot radius is sufficient. Is that something that the town should require the developer to do? And what is the best practices that's going on in Arizona?
Well, I, I mean, they, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioner, I, you know, I'm aware, for example, in Phoenix, that they have village committee planning areas, so you end up having these neighborhood meetings, such as this, on more than one neighborhood meeting, which, quite frankly, has some benefit as long as people are participating, because I think sometimes for these more complicated projects, developers appreciate that input and then try and fine-tune their project before they get to the decision-making bodies like the commission and council. So for Phoenix, that works, probably because it's so much more dense, and you have those village committees. We don't have that here. I'm not sure I've seen a distinction between, you know, a project that's in a rural area versus an urban area. We are talking, I think, according to AJ, about just the neighborhood meeting, and it sounds like the neighborhood meeting is being treated with notice the same as the actual, say, rezoning ordinance. So, I mean, that's certainly acceptable. In Arizona, you can provide more notice than is the minimum required. You just can't provide less notice than the minimum required. So I think there is a lot of discretion that could be in play. If AJ's reading from the ordinance, it would be something that the commission would, say, recommend and work on with the staff, but ultimately, there would have to be an approval to amend it at the council level. But I think, you know, more notice rather than less notice is always a good thing, as long as it's not overly cumbersome. I don't know the history on advertisements saying just adjacent for these neighborhood meetings. That does seem maybe too minimalistic. I don't think the statute requires a specific distance, as mentioned, for these neighborhood meetings, but certainly more than 300 feet would seem reasonable, especially when you're in a rural area. As far as putting it on the developer, it's my understanding in other cities, I'm not sure what we do here, that the developers are responsible for gathering the address list for the mailings. So I think, as long as it's reasonable, you know, if it's not a mile mailing notification, I don't think the development community will push back too hard.
So is that something that we could leave to Planning and Zoning staff to determine when a project comes in, if there's enough density around the project to notify within the 300 feet, or whether the project needs to be more widely circulated?
I suppose, I don't know if I'd recommend that, because you're going to want some objective criteria before you have a difficult case, right? So, you know, maybe if there's an internal operation, if there, AJ, if you're doing a certain way and it's not the same as the code, that might be a good thing to have a code amendment, to align the practice with the code provision.
So what, so as I mentioned, the notice for a neighborhood meeting is rising to the level of notice associated with public hearing. Where that discretion is currently allowed in code, and this, again, was exercised by past directors, is that in addition to, and again, this is specifically to neighborhood meeting, in addition to notifying the adjacent property owners, the director or designee may reasonably determine that other potentially affected citizens are notified. So there's serious discretion in this. And if, I'm sorry, it's good to have direction, because discretion leads to you missed it, you, right? So I think if, again, taking our current standard operating procedure and codifying it is definitely a step in the right direction. And if we want to then go a step further to, again, broaden the outreach, I would ask that we consider directing staff to, and with the assistance of council, to develop some language for your consideration, so that those things become codified. And then we could take that as a recommendation to the council. And that way, we take discretion out of it. It makes it a lot easier for staff. Again, as council mentioned, in a more difficult case, I would hate to say, well, you know what, instead of notifying a quarter mile, why didn't you go right to the... So I think some direction and guidance from you as the commission would be greatly appreciated by staff.
Commissioner De Rosa brings up a good point when she talks about best management practices. There's several municipalities that have trod this ground before us, you know, the Gilberts... the Casagrandes, the Maces, the Buckeyes of the world, and Chancellors. Could we check with them and just kind of get a feel of how they're, how they're doing this, and maybe report back to us in another meeting or two, and just see if anyone else has, has grappled with this and what they've come up with?
Yes, we, we will absolutely do that. And, absolutely. And, and if you would like us to then take that and draft some language for consideration, we could do that as well. So whatever the pleasure of the commission.
And I, I think you're on to something. I, I'm, having sat kind of on that side of the table before, I appreciate the, the nice direction, so that I'm consistent with everybody, and then when they read the code too, they know what's expected of them.
Yes, sir.
Coming in, so it provides them with some, some surety as well, which is always good. It's good for both sides.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, anytime you can be clear on, when you're speaking to that side of the table, the development community, an applicant maybe here in town, yes, it, it assists our, you know, dispensing good customer service, and, and I know they appreciate knowing very clearly what is expected.
Absolutely. Any, any thoughts on about how long that will take? Do you think that'll be, meeting in August, you'll come back to us, or?
I believe we could poll other communities, and if you would like some sample language, I, I would, again, I think it's maybe better to target earlier dates. So if, if, if we could target the second meeting in July.
That's even better.
Would be, at least for an interim report, and, and we would try to get that information out to you as well as advanced as possible, so that you're able to see what we're working on, you know, included in your packets.
Super. I think we all appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item C, Commissioner Interview Update.
Yes, uh, we...
I'm sorry, hold on just one sec.
My apologies.
Mr. Chairman, did, did we, did we address, A, the transportation plan? I, I missed something here.
They're, they're, they're putting, they're putting it together.
It's coming back.
Oh, you're coming back at another meeting?
Yes, sir. I, um, the presentation's being worked on. I'm relying on some other departments to help fulfill your request, and that's where I'm at, unfortunately.
It'll probably be a joint meeting with council and commission.
All right. I'm sorry, I missed, I missed it, so apologize.
No, it's okay. No, it's okay.
Commissioner Interview Update.
Yes, sir. We will be conducting interviews on Monday, June twenty-fourth. We have two applicants for the one vacant position. Following those interviews, there will be a vote and a recommendation made to the council, and the council will entertain that at one, an upcoming town council meeting.
Question, question. You, you have two applicants, right?
Yes, sir.
We actually have at least two openings. We have a commissioner and an alternate opening, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
I know you're, you probably don't know...
Thank you.
In fact, we, I believe we're allowed two alternates, because I was second alternate for a while.
We are allowed two alternates.
Yeah, okay, just so you, for your knowledge.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, that takes care of Agenda Item Seven. Number eight, Agenda Item Rate is called to the commission for current events. Commission members, anything to report or announce? Any agenda items that you'd like on, that we'd like to appear on future agendas?
I have a few things. As Mr. Monroe said, he would update us on the Hunt Highway as part of the transportation, so I'll, I'll hold off on that. Also looking for, we had discussed that we were looking for updates on all the PUDs that were pending, so maybe that could be part of what comes back to us. I believe when Kathy Adams was on, she had asked that a couple of meetings back. And then, could we also get an update on the master, the master plan for the water and the wastewater, which I think you, Mr. Chairman, have been asking about? These just seem to be lagging. We just haven't gotten any information.
Yeah, I, I think it was, Mari Sella, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it about a, a year or so ago that staff produced a nice map that showed all the outstanding PUDs scattered around town and gave us some information? Just maybe replicating that for us again would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. I see in the minutes that an update was given by Mr. Harmer, Larry, stated a Mark Cowling, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know who Mark Cowling is, compiled a summary article on all the improvements based on a presentation given by Public Works.
I did email that out to all the commissioners.
I'm sorry, Mari.
I emailed that out to all the commissioners, that article.
I'll have to look again. I don't remember seeing it, but thank you.
Okay.
Any other events happening in the community, Mari Sella, that we might, what we want, want to announce, just to make sure it gets out to the public?
July fourth.
July fourth, yes.
The Florence Fest. Yeah.
Always a big event here.
Big event, great time. Businesses will be open on Main Street, there'll be fireworks. Hopefully, nothing gets in the way of that. Even during COVID times, we were able to get fireworks, so I think it'll be a great time.
Very good. Okay. Agenda item number nine.
Oh, wait, wait, one second. I'll bring up something, Chairman. What are we going to do about the Fourth of July being our first Thursday of the month? Are we going to cancel, or are we going to try and postpone it to the next week? Or do you, you anticipate a lot of stuff coming in the next two weeks that we need to address?
I do not anticipate anything coming in within the next week to put a July fourth meeting out there, so that one will probably be canceled due to the holiday. I don't, the only one I know that we have coming in agreed that they would be open to the second meeting in July.
Okay.
And at this time, they're not ready for July fourth, so...
Ask our attorney, is that something we would vote on, or who makes that decision?
It should probably be decided to not hold the meeting since it's, it's scheduled. Probably should be direction to not have the meeting. But you can't, I mean, we don't have that on our agenda, so...
Usually staff lets us know because of the lack of or availability of agenda items for that evening, so we'll, we'll get something emailed to us probably within the next week or so, right?
Yes. A notice will go about cancellation.
We will probably not have a quorum that day.
Yeah, I couldn't say that, but yeah.
Okay. Anybody who'd like to move for adjournment? That's usually a very popular one.
I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a move, a motion for adjournment by Commissioner Lehman, and a second by Commissioner Pro. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, right? Okay.